2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Currently in the room, we have Mike Hughes, Tim Bonin, Dave somebody, and remotely, we have Hal, so we do have a full quorum. I have one thing under chairman's announcements that we have a certificate of appreciation for Maria, who worked in the Building Planning Board Conservation Commission for 20 years, as well as the Community Development Department. I want to just acknowledge her and thank her for her years of service to the town of Douglas. We do have a certificate of appreciation that I'm going to send her on for the rest of this selectment to sign.
Thank you, Maria, for your service.
Thank you.
It's been a friendly face and a staple in town in that particular department for some time, and best wishes.
Anybody have anything else they want to throw in under there, or are we good?
We're good.
Okay, so we'll bring it to our first agenda item, which is appointments and possible votes for the Economic Development Committee and as well as the Employee Insurance Advisory So for EDC, we have an application from Scott Duncan for an alternate or associate position on the Economic Development Commission. They have a full membership, and the committee is requesting Mr. Duncan to be appointed as either an alternate or an associate in order to sit in and vote when there is not a quorum. So, which I don't know if they can still vote even sitting in, but do we know that? Nah, under the way that EDC is written, I don't think that even as an associate member, they can vote.
From Rich Bowen. Yeah, there's nothing in their authorizing language that creates that opportunity, but they can also create one if they want.
As it stands now, an alternate or associate could not vote even if they were filling in for someone.
Right.
Just to be clear.
Okay. So just out of curiosity, what's the difference between the two?
There really isn't. You're invited to seat at the table and to participate as if you were a member, even if you're not.
But you can't vote. I would stay away from the term alternate then, if they can't vote.
That's right, because it's confusing with the zoning board where the alternates do vote if there's a vacant seat at the table.
So we'll defer it to being an associate member.
I think associate fits it better.
And...
I believe Mr. Duncan is on.
He's on. Yep, yes, he is. How are you this evening, Mr. Duncan? I think you're muted.
No, I see a mute on him.
Yes.
That's mute, that means...
Can you unmute them all?
Oh, no, that's Nick that's muted, I'm sorry. So we're having trouble hearing him.
He doesn't appear to be muted.
Maybe he's muted on his end, because you have to turn up his input.
Let's see now.
There you go. Something happened, that's how.
Mr. Duncan, can you hear us?
Yes, he can hear us.
Okay, we're not hearing you. I don't know if you could look on your end and see if you're muted.
He doesn't see any.
No, he shows that he's not. So it's got to be something, maybe his computer or something. So we have technical difficulties with Mr. Duncan. Yeah, I mean, there's not much debate on it. I mean, if he's ready, willing, and able to sit as an associate member, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't put him through.
Oh, exactly.
The only thing that I call into question is, would he be able to establish a quorum as an alternate member without voting authority?
That's a good question. I don't think that was addressed in the email from Rich Bowen.
I don't see how he would be able to if he can't vote. He wouldn't fulfill the quorum requirement.
Do we have Rich on, do we?
I do not see Attorney Bowen on that.
No, you're not going to get him.
Mr. Chairman, if you have heard me, I suggested we make an article on the special coming up to provide for this type. Step right in if nobody, if there's a need for him to form or adapt.
That's a good idea.
Probably go back to the term alternate.
Yeah.
We anticipate that he's going to have voting powers, Phil, so...
All right, so we get a point.
You should throw him anyway and then clean it up.
That works for me. Anybody care to make a motion on this?
Some of them second.
Excellent. Motion's been made and seconded?
Just clarify, that's for a pretend term of Jolone 30th, 2023, Mr. Duncan. It's a commitment. Cool.
Works for me. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, and then the Employee Insurance Advisory Committee. We have an email from Lieutenant Worcester giving notice that he wants, he will serve on the Employee Insurance Advisory Committee as the Firefighters Union representative, and firefighter Joseph Early will serve as the alternate. If we so choose, we would appoint them both for a term ending June 30th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, so that gets us through that part. So on the second part, second agenda item, which is review, score, and possible votes on the Webster Street property sale. I'd like to remind people that this is not a public hearing. It's basically designed, or this agenda item is for the Board of Selectmen to offer feedback, offer their scoring and possible votes based on the proposals that were retrieved to us. So we did only receive two proposals in the bid. One was from ZNT and the other was from Flying Goose. So we can start going through for, actually, I'm just waiting for Matt to bring me a hard copy of the score sheet.
Okay.
Just so I can kind of review over quickly and...
Thank you.
But while we're waiting on that, I probably want to go up to the board for initial thoughts or feedback on the proposals that were given.
I would ask Hal his opinion on the scoring process, if he was comfortable with how we were supposed to score these and whether or not it's a little too subjective.
Are you talking to me?
Yeah, I was just curious, having probably seen and done this a number of times, whether this approach was necessarily the best approach.
I think it was a good approach, but overall, I think we have two qualified candidates. And the make preference we had though was the revenue projections are quite a bit apart. It was one that's more optimistic. But I think either one, if they purchased the property, would produce a good development based on, you know, their background. I did score them. You wanted to do that, or you wanted to...
Yeah, I'm just...
I thought the system was pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was a well-thought-out scoring sheet, and unfortunately for me, I was ill-prepared and didn't print mine out to come in and review it, so...
So you don't have your numbers with you?
I have my numbers with me, I just don't remember the...
Mike, what did you think?
I mean, I sort of agreed with you a little bit. I thought it was a little bit on the subjective side. I did end up scoring it based on sort of the process and the categories. You know, I just like scoring sheets that are more quantifiable, that sort of, you know, are easier to interpret, the scoring system. But I, you know, again, I ended up scoring the sheet. But if Hal's comfortable with it, then...
As long as Hal's comfortable, we're all comfortable. It's always all about Hal.
Are you a little garbled? Say it again.
I said, it's always about your comfort level, Hal. If you, if you're comfortable, then the rest of us kind of follow suit with how you feel.
Well, I don't have an alternative to present that, you know, the items are somewhat subjective, but they're important in considering, you know, to keep the best of the town.
Matt, did you end up printing out a copy of the...
Dave, do you have anything?
Who needs it?
I agree almost word for word with what you said, Mike. I found it subjective and difficult to score for that reason, and I mean, you know, maybe necessarily so, I don't know. I'm feeling my way along here, but I prefer things that are more concrete, I guess is the best way of saying it.
Yeah, I'd prefer things more quantifiable.
Right.
You know?
Better word.
Yeah. Where, you know, subjective, it's left a little bit to each of our own interpretations in terms of how we think that the proposals met the criteria. I have to say, both proposals were excellent and met the requirements of what we were looking for.
They both did. I think the most, I guess the part that you're looking at that's most subjective is, and it's very hard to really determine, is to look at forecasted revenues. You know, I mean, that's a matter of how aggressively you're going to market, really understanding what some of the other competitors are, and you're trying to literally divine, you know, is the product that you're currently going to be selling out of your facility going to be that much better than local competition? It's kind of hard to do. I mean, you'd want to be optimistic on revenue forecasts.
And I think you're right, it is difficult to do. And because we sort of don't know which revenue projections are the most accurate, you kind of have to score it as, did they provide just that information?
That's pretty much where I put it.
You know, and was it detailed enough to give us an idea?
Yeah.
As opposed to sort of making any interpretation at all in terms of the validity of the figures they provided.
That was the biggest piece I had, was the optimism quotient.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, do you just score higher because someone was more optimistic, maybe not as realistic as maybe another? So I'll tell you, really, the only place I varied in my scoring, I think, was in the character of the town department.
Thank you.
You know, but other than that, it was, it mirrored up and down, I just...
I think there was a little difference, too, in that the category where there's sort of what's most advantageous to the town.
So...
That was left up to a little interpretation as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think the two areas where there was, to me, a delta or a differential was one, obviously, the initial opening bid price, ZNT scored higher. You know, they came in at a higher dollar bid, and there's points to be given for that. I think the rest, they were kind of, like, the revenue forecasting, we've already discussed. They both provided decent revenue numbers, you know, Tim's point, one was more optimistic than the other, but, you know, that's one of those, you know, revenues are the proof in the pudding. It's, once you're open and you actually start making business, they hit those numbers. And the, to me, what was more, what leaned me in one direction was, we have one proposal that is a single business that's coming in and potentially build out at a later date, as opposed to the other business that came in saying, I'm going to have three businesses that are stepping up out of the same facility that day, or from day one. To me, both buildings are, they fit the character of the town, but I lean more towards, you know, your business model isn't just, you know, recreational marijuana, it's recreational marijuana plus a restaurant plus a coffee shop. So that, in my mind, scored a little bit higher than the standalone business model. But all the rest, they were pretty much even up on what they were looking to.
Before we go any further, I think it's just probably prudent to know this answer. Can we not accept these offers and go back out to bid? And what would that do to the process, other than delay it a month?
So you may choose not to decide tonight, but leave it open. You may choose to, under the terms of the RFP, reject all offers for no specified reason, just say rejecting them all and going back out to bid. You can do that. It's right there in the language of your own RFP.
Yeah, I thought I read that.
I know the board's uncomfortable or unaccustomed to this process, because the town administrator's been the chief procurement officer for a while, so this is what we do all the time in that role. There's definitely, in any request for proposals process, a very significant level of subjectivity, because you've decided, in crafting the RFP, that there are issues other than price that you want to take into consideration. And you're entitled to your opinion. Town meeting charged the Board of Selectmen with making the choice. So in crafting the scoring system, I knew it was being subjective, because there are elements of subjectivity that come to evaluating any proposal for the development of a piece of property. It might be a wonderful economic boom to the town, but if it looks like it just landed from the planet Mars, and it's completely out of character with the town, you'd be criticized for that. So that part of the score sheet gives you the opportunity to determine what it is, quote unquote, you want to own as a decision-making body. You don't have to be engineering-precise with the amount of points, you just have to be consistent on what the basis of your evaluation was as between the two. Well, that roofline is too high, it doesn't look like it belongs in that part of the town. You don't have to go and, you don't have to have a court case that you prove beyond a reasonable doubt, you just have to have your, an opinion.
Yep.
So the blend of objective measures and subjective measures would get you to what's most advantageous for the town. You don't have to accept a proposer's estimate of their revenue either. You can dig into it and do more analysis, or you can ask somebody else to do more analysis if you want for your next meeting, if you don't want it to determine tonight.
Matt, are the revenues generated by a retail facility reportable to the state and available?
Well, the state, are you talking about cannabis or retail in general?
Retail cannabis.
Yeah, because I think it's a condition of their license. They owe the state money every time they make a sale, just like they owe the town 3% because we, the town adopted that portion of the state statute.
So I just think it, it might be helpful if we had comparisons of other startups and what the rest were, and then try to find ones that might be close to our situation, where we're located, et cetera. Give us a better feel as to which numbers make are more logical.
Now, whether the state has the numbers, and we know they do, and whether they're able to share them, may not be the same question. Both bidders presented pro formas. I believe Flying Goose's pro forma is only for the cannabis location and doesn't include the other two storefronts. ZNT's pro forma is based on an expert analysis by their consultant, Brian Carney, who's been involved in the cannabis industry, and I think he's using a formula that's driven by population density and the prevalence of people to partake. The analysis that was done by ZNT is robust in the sense that it complies with the terms of the HCA, so they factored in revenue flows both from an impact fee and from the 3% tax, because that's the way their host community agreement is written. On real estate, neither party actually did a thorough analysis of what they would owe the town for real estate. It's not what, it costs you to build a building, it's not what you think you could sell the building for on the open market, it's what the tax assessor would value your property. I, the only comp I felt comfortable pulling was a building on Riedel that's owned by Danlin Realty, I think it's Danheeney's little strip mall there, it's about 8,900 square feet, and it looks like the tax assessor's using a very round figure, so I think she's probably applying it across similar commercial properties all across town of $80 a square foot. That would be the value. So Flying Goose's building would be around $800,000 for the building, not for the land around, just thus the building, and ZNT's would be at about $240,000. No matter how you cut that, you're going to end up with a real estate tax advantage, but it's in the thousands, whereas the cannabis, there's a wide variety of opinion there on what they expect. You could look at the square footage of both of the cannabis footprints, and since they're so similar, say, it's a wash. Unless you believe one business's business plan is so much stronger than the other, that it's obvious to you as a decision-maker that one business probably will do better than the other, then if you look at both buildings, both cannabis footprints, they'd be 3,000 square feet. So it'd be very hard, sitting here now, to speculate where you're going to be four years from now. If they're selling popular strains and they have the throughput, they would probably both generate very similar numbers on a per-square-foot basis for sales of cannabis, and thus turning, remitting to the town about the same amount.
Good point.
In crafting this part of the scoring system, I clearly, and I've said this already once before, wanted to push the analysis towards a cannabis business, because a cannabis business would generate more revenue than a non-cannabis business. So if there were cannabis businesses interested in locating in this part of town, they would, they would have a leg up, but not necessarily a leg up against each other, a leg up against other proposals. Does that clarify some of how we got to this?
Yeah, and I think I personally have come to the meeting with a defensible scoring based off of your explanation and the need for, you know, a certain level of comfort on my end. In both proposals, I think that little piece of land has a ton of opportunity, and I didn't see that fully leveraged in both, but one was more than the other, in my opinion, but the scores didn't... As I totaled them up, it was very close, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, same here.
I think we should stick with it. Maybe we need more time, I don't know, but I think we got two pretty good proposals, and these, both of them have done what we've asked them to do. So, but if we did more time, we could put, clear the decision after the next, or we could do something tonight, it'd be great to go either way, but I don't think we should open up for more votes.
No, I mean, I'm...
Go ahead, Dave.
I wouldn't open up for other bidders, that's unfair to the two bidders we have.
Yeah.
I think our only option would be if we wanted to discard the two bids and go back to, you know, point zero and start again. I don't personally see any reason to do that, but I think it would be unfair to the people in good faith who submitted a bid to say, well, we're going to hold it and wait for other bidders. I don't think that's the right way to go.
No, I think both people that bitted on the process did exactly what we had asked of them, and both proposals were crisp and clean and followed the letter of the RFP.
I think, having heard all this, I don't think you can not act on these two, otherwise you'd throw them both out and throw out an RFP with a different scoring system, but at that point, you can't limit it to those two. So this is the ship that we're sailing on, I don't want to step in the way of growth in Douglas, so I would say I'm comfortable with awarding one of the two applicants today. How's that for coming around full circle?
That was full circle.
Well, it's good.
Oh, it is good, I think we examine every option that way, that is good.
I mean, I can start up, they were, like I said, they were pretty much squared up the places where I showed a differential. Obviously, like I said, the starting bid that had come in, ZNT, did score higher. I scored, I scored Flying Goose higher, they were pretty much dead even, except for Flying Goose, in my mind, took the edge on the fact that it's a diversified business model that's coming in from day one. So I mean, I, I think that the fact that you've got three different businesses coming in offsets more than just the, a little bit higher of a bid. I put Flying Goose scoring slightly higher, so that's where I was leaning.
And I'll just echo what you're saying. I think both proposals were excellent, but I gave the edge by a very narrow margin to Flying Goose because of the size of the building and the fact that they were attaching to other businesses to the cannabis building, so they had a plan for full development.
It was the way I felt. We benefit so much from the extra size of that building, tenants, revenue in the way of taxes, as you laid out and everything else, so difficult decision to make.
Well, I'm the outlier, I guess, went with the ZNT, but very smart, so I have no problem with either one, certainly.
That was a matter of, for me, just like three or four points that separated the two of them.
Yeah.
That's where I was at.
Mine was...
The differential is four points.
Mine was three.
Mine was one, and it went to ZNT, where the, I gave Flying Goose, I think, a few extra points was in their character of the town, right? But as I did the math, because of the extra money that ZNT was willing to pay for, that I think gave them that extra at the end-of-the-day point, so, very close.
So what does that leave us, 3-2?
It appears to be.
So where do we move from that? Do we want to deliberate and try and sway people one way or the other, or I'm pretty concrete in where I sat with my scoring, and as I'm sure you folks are as well?
I certainly gave mine a lot of thought as well.
Yeah.
So I feel comfortable with how I ultimately came up with the scoring for both.
As do I.
Yeah, and my Jedi mind trick thing isn't working. You know, we all, I mean, we all deliberated, the score was 3 to 2, you know, that's how it works.
Okay.
So... Do we have to take an official vote?
Yeah.
You need to do that and then direct me to do something.
I would say, based off of the scoring system that came through, we would propose to award the RFP winner to Flying Goose by 3 to 2.
Well, I think you make a motion and we vote.
Some of them.
Second.
I didn't catch the motion.
So based off of our deliberation, we are awarding the RFP to Flying Goose off of a 3 to 2 vote.
Yeah, I think you propose Flying Goose, and then you vote how you want, and then there may be a couple no's, and that's just what it is.
So I move that we award the winning proposal, the Flying Goose.
I will second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mike Hughes, aye.
Bonin, nay.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Dave Cortez, aye.
Davis, nay.
All right. Well, that settles that.
I think you should direct the town administrator and town council to enter into PNS negotiations with Flying Goose.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, so we'll get back to you at some point in the future with a document.
All right. Consider and vote on extension of allowance of outdoor table service.
Could I just make a suggestion that we hold on to these score sheets, should they be needed?
Yep, that's part of the record.
And I appoint Mike the keeper.
I look like the secretary.
We'll give them to Suzanne.
Want me to run them?
She's, just gather them and hold on to them.
Okay.
Mine's not here, I'll get it.
Yeah, I'll leave my mine there. So back to consider and vote on extension of allowance of outdoor table service and possible votes. We have an advisory from ABTC regarding an extension of allowing outdoor seating. We've allowed outdoor seating to the Picket Fence and the Beagle, which will expire on November 1. We can issue extensions for any period up to and until 60 days or December 30.
So only the Beagle Club is looking for an extension?
Yes.
Did the Beagle give us a time period they were seeking, or?
I think he wants the max. He didn't say in his email.
Would I be inclined to suggest?
Would it, would it make sense to just extend it for both of them in the event of...
I think he wants the max. He didn't say in his email.
Would it make sense to just extend it for both of them in the event that the Picket Fence changes their mind?
Yes. It's going to be a very mild November.
You know that how.
I noticed that the Picket Fence tent survived that windstorm very well, even though the flowers were knocked down. I think they were, we insisted that they secured with standard taffoon, and I think they came pretty close to that.
Indeed. Maybe we can tether the flowers down next time, too.
Exactly. Next taffoon.
All right. Anybody care to make a motion on the extension of the licenses?
Adopting Mr. Bonan's suggestion, which I think is good, I would move that we allow both the Beagle Club and the Picket Fence to extend outdoor dining to December 30.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, consider and vote on raising snowplow driver rates and possible votes. We have Mr. Ferno here.
I don't believe we're going to need snowplows this year.
All right. November's already shut down. Mike shut down the rest of the winter.
The woolly bear was all brown.
That's right.
How about the acorns?
The acorns are everywhere.
Good evening, gentlemen. So about two years ago, I think, I came to you guys. We were having trouble retaining subcontractors, snowplow guys. Our rates were down. We were asking for a little more insurance, quite a bit more insurance, and we came to the agreement that insurance would stay down. We gave them a little bit of a raise. So we've done well in the past two years to keep and retain the guys that I've had. In talking with other towns around us, people that's scrambling to keep or get snowplow operated, so in speaking with Matt and towns around us, I'd like to raise the rates so we mirror mass DOT, their plow rates to their subcontractors, because otherwise, you know, the guys bail for more money, and that's just the name of the game, you know? So I have a great group now. I've already polled everyone. I don't think I'm going to lose one guy this year. So if we can mirror these rates as mass DOT, they're in your packet, I think we can just move right along and keep everyone we have. The only thing that we didn't do and we probably should have is just done every year, just so it's not a $9 hit. You know? That was two years ago when we gave them the raise to get up into where they are now. So my suggestion would be, you know, we just mirror mass DOT and make it competitive, keep the good guys that we have and continue on.
They've been averaging like anywhere from $1.50 to $3 a year.
Yeah, I think they got a $5 and a $4 raise, the last two mass DOT. So that's why we're like $9 behind now.
Yeah.
So it does make sense to adjust as they adjust.
I would suggest that, you know?
Well, for $9, they'll wait until July to get paid because it's that big of a delta.
Yeah, and honestly, this raise will cost us another $162, $62 an hour when we plow, you know? So it's not terrible. I know it is more money, it's more taxpayer money, and I get it, but if we want the service that, you know, we've given the town over the years, I just think it's a well-spent $162 an hour.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't see any issue with it. Otherwise, we're just going to have a drain of talent, so to speak.
Yeah, and then we just get so far behind that, you know, we drive our guys into the ground.
Yep.
I'm just curious to see if they hit that manhole cover on my street again. I would pull it every storm.
They can't, no, we fixed it.
So I'm in complete agreement. So I'll make a motion that we increase the rates as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You guys do a great job with the streets all winter, so I don't want to jeopardize that.
Thank you.
Again, it was easy to make this increase because we're not going to use it, so...
I love it.
Tim says mild winter, so...
What's the Omenax say?
I said November, I didn't say winter.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
All right, so approve and sign the warrant for the state election November 3, 2020, and possible votes.
I'll make a motion that we approve and sign the warrant for the state election since we have no choice.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
It's true.
Any further discussion? And thank you for the motion that we have no choice on. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so now we have to open the special town meeting warrant for November 14, 2020, and close the warrant as of October 20, 2020, and possible votes.
Again, the moderate November will pay off with the special town meeting.
So the town moderator is in charge of setting town meeting and the location, and my understanding is he wants to do this outside on that day, so...
Bring your packets in case you are incorrect about mild November.
And the shovel. Snowblower.
Hot apple cider for everybody.
Hot toddies.
Hot toddies.
Four reasons to go.
No, town property.
It's in a flask.
School property. You irreverent coof chairman, you.
Let me think back to my high school days. If you mix...
Let's not.
Coke bottle.
Probably should go down this road.
I wouldn't know anything about that. I was too busy in the library studying.
Right.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we open special town meeting warrant for November 14 and close the warrant on October 20, 2020.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
The only thing I would say is it's a Saturday, it's in November. I think there's a certain subsection of the town that may not necessarily come out. I don't know if this town meeting will have a particularly difficult warrant or articles to discuss, but I know it's COVID and all, but I would like to get back to some normalcy at some point, Dave.
I agree heartily with that. I mean, if we're going to do it outside, it really is, we're taking a chance. Big time.
We could always make a motion to ban COVID within the city limits, the town limits of Douglas. I like that.
This is me not saying it.
All right, then. Vote. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we're to approve minutes and possible votes?
Can we go over these real quick? I just, Article 11, the car wash just caught my eye. I went to get my car washed in Nuxbridge the other day, and I noticed that the car wash there is closed. Are we, have someone looking to put one in town?
If it's okay, Mr. Chairman, why don't we go through this article by article? I was going to do it in my update to you anyway, so now's the time. Article 1 is transfers and amendments. You see that there's substantial funds at special town meeting in the fall. This has been our pattern. We've moved funds to the forestry account to deal with our ongoing issue with dead and dying trees in the public right-of-way. This year's 50,000. There are a number of other smaller transfers requested. Article 2, prior year bills, I don't believe there are any, but it's there as a placeholder. Article 3, personnel bylaw classification amendment or bylaw add police lieutenant, I would say that's police lieutenant and assistant chief. So what I'm working with, with, I keep, that's a bad habit, I say with like three times. With Attorney Mazer is drafting an amendment to the bylaw that carves out these two non-union positions in the uniform services of the town in order to clarify the treatment of those positions. To date, the practice in Douglas, as in other towns, has been to sign a contract, but Attorney Mazer has reminded not only us as his client, but other KP law clients, that there is no authorization under state law to create an employment contract with a secondary officer, non-union officer in the uniform. It's just, it's unenforceable, it's ultra virus, there's nothing we can agree to. We're only supposed to extend those benefits available under the personnel bylaw of the town to non-union employees who don't have a contract. Having said that, the position of lieutenant in the police department and assistant chief in the fire department would be unique in the sense that they're uniform services. There are a number of laws that apply to people of 111F and others. So you have to have something in your bylaw that acknowledges those differences. I think I would, what I've drafted for Brian's review is language that says the personnel bylaw and the personnel policies and procedures of the town apply, except that you may do a clothing allowance, you may authorize the use of a town vehicle, and you may authorize specialized education, you know, either supporting somebody's quest for a degree in their field or their continuing ed requirements to maintain their certifications. Because those things are unique to public safety, employment, and we, the chiefs have a contract, the unions have a contract, and we're creating these positions in the middle. And you can't refer to the union contract and extend union negotiated benefits to non-union employees. It's a very bad practice, and you can't put that person in the negotiation because now ethically they're challenged because they're negotiating over a term from which they would benefit. So this carve-out, I think, is the right approach. That's a long-winded explanation for Article 3. Article 4, I think this is house cleaning on the part of the treasurer. I think that OPEB trust has to be renewed from time to time. I've got a fair amount to say about OPEB, but I want to do it during my report. Every year, Articles 5 and Article 6, Jean has certain accounts where if we have turnbacks, she likes to take those balances and push them to the OPEB liability fund or the stabilization account. Then I think she's got Article 7 in here for BVT because the other towns voted the budget, and we have to budget that amount in order to have the funds in the account to pay the bill when it comes in. Article 8 is capital improvement plan. This goes on for a couple of pages. The capital committee is active and meeting. What's on the table is this. I think I've explained this before, but we fought like cats and dogs to not do a project like Sutton and Northbridge did, and looking at alternative technologies, alternative ways of doing things. And originally, the project was sized to reflect the cost of replacing portable radios, which are your handhelds, and mobile radios, which are the ones in the vehicles. And that was it. And the price that we came up with was fairly robust. Town meeting approved that expenditure. After really looking into prior projects that were done in this town for public safety radio and some of the pitfalls that they fell into, buying new radios doesn't solve the problem of being able to hear each other, no matter where they, where our first responders are. That is a transmission and broadcasting coverage issue, and no matter what we do, Douglas is a hilly town with lots of trees. We've got buildings, what we need to be able to penetrate with appropriate level of radio signal, because that's where we think we might have problems. So the proposal is for a microwave simulcast system with, you know, two microwave transmitters, and the third location is connected by the town's fiber network, so that's, the high school roof is connected back to us with fiber. So all the backhaul is already there. That project comes out to substantially more than what Town Meeting approved in the first instance. Town Meeting approved, I always transpose these numbers, if it was 137 or 173? 173. That's nowhere near the 740,000 that it will take to do this project. But we also have a number of projects that have closed out. So Town Meeting voted, we did the project, there was a surplus left in the account that if you turned all those back, there would be another $100,000. So you're starting off with 273 to the good towards the 750, and really not asking the town for any other projects this year so that we can hold free cash for any possible budget problems with the fiscal '22 budget from the state. One exception, the senior center, we have a safety issue there, and we'd like to do the floor project. Ideally, we'll get a grant and we'll use the grant to fund most of it. But what I've asked Patrice to do is ask for the maximum from the grant and ask for the maximum from the capital committee, because we're only talking about 55,000 or so for a lot of things that she needs to do, not just the floors, but doorways and other things that are not ADA compliant. And then withhold her project until the grant is either awarded or not awarded. Because if she doesn't need the capital, that's the funds that are set aside by Town Meeting, she can always return it. So that's the strategy right now. Underneath the rugs on the floor of the senior center, we have 9x9 inch tiles tested out with asbestos, low quantities of asbestos. They have to be remediated, that's where the expense comes from. That is the capital budget. Then we'll push forward, the other five years, we'll just push them down and whatever the capital committee votes. Cedar Street takings, the engineer that specked out the project has been asked to retain a certified appraiser who can provide us with robust defensible values. The roadway is going to be straightened beyond the pathway to the bridge. That requires some taking of land. The zoning map amendment that is requested in Article 10 is to change zoning on Gilboa Street to industrial. Article 11 is another zoning bylaw amendment proposal to add car wash to uses. So we finally got to the answer to your question, Selectman. Yes, there has been a party that wants to locate a car wash in Douglas and is very willing to locate almost anywhere in town, but because of our watershed protection overlay district and some of the other things that we have, car washes are specifically not allowed, but they don't appear in the use table at all. So even outside of the watershed overlay district, technically, what's not mentioned is not allowed. So this would, if you're outside the district, it would be allowed if you could find a suitable piece of property. This is one of the areas of the watershed overlay district that frankly needs to be modernized because technology's come a long way in the capturing of the runoff water and the treatment of it and dealing with it. And we're not just dumping it straight into the street or into the storm drains anymore. So I think we've come a long way there. Stormwater sewer system compliance, this is year three of the plan. $45,000 requested in Article 12. Article 13, creating a commission on disabilities. There is within the Massachusetts general laws the opportunity to create a committee that would meet and opine on any number of issues before the town, the status of our buildings, building new town buildings, and other issues that confront the disability community. And there needs to be a substantial representation on the committee for people who face those challenges in life so that their advice could be from a firsthand perspective. We, the town never adopted this local option, and when we go into the ADA grant process, we lose points as a result. First of all, we benefit from the input of these citizens. Second of all, we're not getting the benefit of the committee when we're in competitive grant rounds, where one or two points has made a difference, whether or not we get a grant. So that's what the request is there. And lastly, more house cleaning. Article 14, there are receipts reserved for appropriation in the waterways account that need to go over to the dive team. I think we're trying to settle on what that number is. So that's the warrant for a fall town meeting. I don't anticipate... I don't anticipate, at this late stage in the game, very much change from that.
The matter of communications with the police department and the fire has been on in front of this board a number of times. I remember one of my first votes, I think, as a selectman was Chief Foley telling us we needed X, Y, and Z and we'd solve all our problems. That didn't work. Are we, do we have the necessary professional input to know that what we're doing here is really the right, the right approach?
So, yes. That's true. I respect what Chief Foley was trying to do. He was trying to get you a good system and a cost-effective banner. And instead of doing an actual propagation study out in the field, he opted to have a mathematical model done and utilized a federal resource that does those mathematical models to determine where a signal should reach. It just didn't pan out. And what you ended up with, and I'm paraphrasing here, and this is my layperson's opinion, but with this hodgepodge of systems, UHF and VHF, and then highway on low band, which is kind of like elephants communicating in the ultra-low range. You know, the sounds travel very long distance. Low band's extremely reliable. Problem is, it's being phased out and we're not going to be able to buy equipment for it in a few years. The VHF/UHF thing, it strengthened the signal but within a tighter circle around the transmitter. And then it dropped off pretty aggressively once you got outside that circle. So in order to be able to still hear each other, you ended up actually frankly with both. So we have cross-band repeaters in UHF and VHF radios. It's kind of expensive and it's kind of clumsy. And we should just all be on VHF as our mutual aid partner communities are. And the radios can be properly programmed so everybody can talk to each other with one, with one radio. Microwaves have also come a long way. So there was a time when you needed a great big dish and a clear line of sight to another tall building, and that's why it was very popular in the urban centers around the country. It was military technology, microwave communication. Now it's a much smaller thing. It is no longer affected to the same degree by rainfall. So at the time that Chief Foley did his study, microwave probably wasn't a very cost-effective solution because you would have needed more broadcast sites and it's an expense every time you climb up a tower. So now you're only going to have two. One location will be that industrial, that's the name of the company that owns this, Industrial Communication. Right on the Webster-Douglas line, right at the piece of property you talked about tonight, there's a tower back there. It's not a cell tower, it's a cable tower. It's spectrums, I believe, to do updates on your equipment. So it's communicating wirelessly to cable equipment in the field. There's plenty of space up there. It's 800 bucks a month to be there and they provide the generator and the maintenance and everything else. The other tower is our existing monopole on the water tank.
Okay.
These guys are good because they've caught a bunch of mistakes. I mean, I won't get into it, but there are things that have happened that should not have happened. And I think with Marcus Communications, they're on the statewide bid list, so we don't need to procure this. We can go straight to the statewide contract. They're honoring the prices in the statewide contract and providing what the statewide, what the folks who negotiated the contract in the field felt were best value contract for the equipment.
Approved minutes and possible votes. Thank you, man.
So a move that we approve the minutes to September 15, 2020 meeting?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then I'll also make a motion to approve the minutes for our executive session meeting on September 15, 2020 and retaining those minutes.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Your report, Mr. Administrator.
The warrant was the longest item I had. I will make two points about economic development. I think the last time the selectmen met, I made reference to a competitive national process that mass business development was referring to simply as Project Dragonfly. Just confidential competition for locations. Massachusetts had seven, and I think there may have been as, I want to say 30, 40, 50 sites across the country that were being considered in the preliminary rounds. Interestingly enough, the lot that crosses the town borders of Sutton, Douglas, and Uxbridge was the only Massachusetts location that made the cut. So that location was one of 12 semifinalists. My understanding is that the project team, we did a virtual tour of the remaining 12 sites today and then we'll have some further, we'll see how we made out. For us, on the town side, this has been a lot of work because the project team wanted some very specific information about our utility capacities for water and wastewater. They chased after grid for utility capacity on electricity. The site that's contemplated is in the manufacturing sector and requires a lot of resources in order to be able to operate its business. That being the case, we had to provide some assurances that if we didn't have the capacity immediately available for them to utilize, that we would have a plan to get them to the point where they could do it. I think we made the grade on that, but if they're going to narrow it down from 12 to three, it will again, to use the word again, be subjective. I'm sure that, the way things work is, and Kevin, you've done this with, probably with Comcast. That initial round, you just got 12, 13, 14 boxes on a piece of paper and you're not interested in details. You just click off and those proposals that come back with the most boxes clicked off, they go to a technical review committee. And the technical review committee decides whether or not you can actually do what you say they want. And then you get down to the finalists and it really comes down to where the CEO likes to drink wine, eat out, where his buddies live, you know, where she went to school. It's all about very subjective things. Business relationships can be very important. So we just tried to get to this phase and this is how far we've gotten. We generated a tremendous amount of information and goodwill with our sister communities in Sutton and Uxbridge. Jen Hager, in particular, the planner in Sutton, has been a huge help in coordinating the response of the three towns. And that will, that will stand us in good stead going forward for any proposal that involves our three towns because we have this working relationship built. So no matter what happens here, this is a good outcome. I would say for public consumption that even if this big project doesn't pan out, there is very likely still going to be a project there. I think there's a Plan B that's pretty much rock solid. And Plan A was just, came out of nowhere. It would be great to have it, but it's not going to change Plan B's enthusiasm for doing what they want to do if Plan A doesn't work out. So if you're familiar with the piece of property in question, very little of it is actually in Douglas. This is the far northeast corner of the town's boundaries, a little corner that leaks over 146. And a good part of it's in Sutton and a good part of it's in Uxbridge. Uxbridge has changed its zoning. Douglas didn't need to. And Sutton might not have to. The issue for them is whether or not the building is two stories or higher unless it's an office space up on the second floor, then it's permissible. So they went to Town Meeting and tried to change it and they failed. So just in the back of your mind, you know, there's any plans for building on the Sutton piece will have to comply with the regulations, the zoning regulations in Sutton.
Sutton, Town Meeting considered that and voted against? Uniform?
So they have a height limitation in their industrial zone that pretty much precludes having a second floor or too high of a ceiling on a single floor. They make an exception to that if the space is office space and there's people up there. Because I guess, I suppose if I were drafting that and I wrote that, it would be because I would assume that where we're housing people will be more attractive and less of intense use than large manufacturing or warehouse.
Or the town hall over there has two floors.
Yeah. It was built in whenever, 1702 or something, but yeah. But it's like anything else, the neighbors have a voice and they came out and they didn't want to change.
I just wanted to say that I've been monitoring the traffic on this project and Bob, Manaric, and Matt have done a tremendous amount of work on this thing. And Mr. Sullivan as well. So, and this doesn't pan out here, all that information is going to be useful for another project. It's nice how this settled down with the top dog in Massachusetts. Hopefully the others were dropped by the wayside, but it's been a good educational process.
Good. Thanks, Hal. So the second item on my report would be also economic development related, just to keep you apprised. Within the selectmen's budget, there's a professional technical line. We increased that line in the budget process to account for appraisals and other technical background that would be needed for some of these economic development projects. I've let out a contract for 5,700 of the 12,000 that you have in that line item for the appraisal of the land on Gilboa on one side and Northeast Maine on the other. The method that we're looking at there is a cost to cure, so there will be a final resting value for the property improved, aggregated and improved on a per acre basis. From that, you deduct the cost of those improvements, in this case, the bridge, to connect the property to Gilboa Street and get access to 146. That offset's going to take you, still going to take you to a better place than you would have been if you tried to sell these landlocked lots for their, as is valued as basically a pile of rocks. So I'm optimistic on whether that's going to come out. The retiree health renewal, this is my third item. If you're in the business of looking for good news, you'll recall that we switched from Tufts to Aetna after a competitive bid. For the first time, our group was large enough to get national carriers. So we had a very interesting bid process and Aetna won and gave us, the Massachusetts Strategic Health Group is the us, three years guaranteed with rate caps. The rate that we paid per member per month for fiscal 2020 was actually calendar 2020 because this is a retiree plan, was 291.29. The rate cap was 274.60 and the actual pricing per member per month came in at 272.03, a 6.61% decrease. So if you think it's history to hear that your health insurance rates went down, then we just made history. That's for our retirees, but that's far better than 350, 360, 370 that we were paying Tufts for the same coverage. So that part of the Strategic Health Group has really worked out extremely well.
Do it two more years and you hit the trifecta.
Exactly. Well, so this is the second year, so we've actually done really, really well. There's an, there's an interesting little wrinkle too in Washington. If you're looking for them, either party having done anything right, in the last two years, they've been waiving the health insurance fee that is no longer part of the calculation of a retiree plan premium. So that's been a benefit too. What does all this mean? Well, if you like to geek out about this stuff, the town's OPEB liability is calculated as a function of our rates. And since our rates have come down so far, the Massachusetts Strategic Health Group has asked its underwriters to recalculate our OPEB liability. So my hunch is even though our census will continue to go up, and that's going to be the primary driver of our OPEB liability as a town, because the rates have come down almost 30%, you should see a substantial decrease in your OPEB liability. Bearing in mind that the goal is always to position yourself for your next bond rating call so that if you ever have to borrow money, you might hope for an improvement in your rate. And shrinking your OPEB liability is a big part of that. The last thing I have, well, a couple of things. With respect to mutual aid, there's been some changes and discussions. District Seven seems to have come around to the Douglas way of thinking and there's a plan in place for continuity of operations that the district has yet to adopt, but it's a step in the right direction, which we will no longer be left on an island to sink in our own misery with COVID. We're going to help each other out and staff each other's stations. And that's where we always should have been, and it seems to be that's where we're going to go. We're having conversations with highway departments nearby, and I think the focus of our conversation is with the town of Uxbridge, that not Plan B, not Plan C, but Plan F. You get to the point where, I mean, all five of our guys or all six of our guys and half of them are down sick. It's going to be hard to plow this town because they're the ones that know the routes and they drive the bigger equipment. Or in the event of a catastrophically bad storm, we will work especially hard to keep each other's medical evac routes open. That's going to be the primary communication. If you're short on staff, we're going to keep your main roads open with our own equipment and come to each other's aid, hopefully allowing your contractors to continue to push back on the smaller side streets. Again, that's Plan F. If that's if we just don't have anything else. Uxbridge is a union shop. They pay more than we do. If they're at time and a half, I bet it's worth every penny. If we don't, if our guys can't work, it's going to be the way we get our streets open. So we just want to make sure we have that plan in place because we don't really know where COVID is going yet, although it looks ominous. And this will be the end of my report. We've had one day in the last week where we were over 700 cases in Massachusetts, new cases reported. We're still testing aggressively as a state, so I don't know that there's a whole lot of change to the baseline trend, but we were at 100 a day and 200, which is no big deal. It's more people, but now we're at 600, 700 a day. Like it or not, political platitudes on one side of the aisle or the other doesn't change a gosh darn thing. This is nature. It's a virus. We don't have a way to stop it really, except to stay away from each other. We can't afford to stay away from each other forever, so the economy needs to move. People are going to get sick and more and more people are going to get sick. And the question is, how are we looking to respond? I've lost track. I think I'm right. I think we're in step two of phase three. And, but we're phasing in step two of phase three.
Phase of your red, yellow, or green.
Whether you're red, yellow, or green. And you have to sustain a red in order to be in trouble for a long period of time, take a step back. For small towns, you don't need many cases to get into the red. And there's been a lot of discussion about how good these metrics are. We do look at the communities in and around the city of Boston. And the virus is very much present in those places and it's very much present in certain parts of New York City and other places where it has been more or less under control for a while. This will affect our operations again. We're still close to the public. If we have to tighten up, we will, but we're not, nowhere near that yet. So we'll make the choices when the facts dictate, when we actually get closer to them. But right now, we have to continue to plan for the worst. We also have begun planning for the inevitable distribution of immunization on a voluntary basis and what that would do for our resources as a town and how we would have to organize the effort. It's not a small undertaking by any stretch of the imagination. It's a lot of work. That's all I had for you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Matt. Any other topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting?
I do have a topic. I would be lying to you if it wasn't anticipated 48 hours ago because it was anticipated 274 years ago. But the great town of Douglas will be celebrating its 275th birthday next year. That was brought to my attention, I think during primary day, a poll worker or two had told us, told me that that was happening, which I thought was great because I wouldn't think to do that math. But that seems like a nice, important milestone and I think the town should, think long and hard as to how we can celebrate.
What day is this?
Gotcha.
Yeah. I was going to say July 4th.
Does anybody really know?
You were here when we started. I knew that joke was coming.
He was perambulating the bounds.
It's just not fanlike.
It isn't. You're here. It was easy. I had to just.
So whether it's a committee of some sort, but I think we probably should surround any sort of celebration around baseball if we can.
Of course. I'm so shocked that you came up with such an idea. I'm so shocked that you came up with such an idea.
Yeah, I don't know what the, what it would be, but I think we should do something.
Baseball didn't exist 275 years ago.
Mike knows from experience.
Well, they played rounders, right?
Yankees and Red Sox have another exhibition game.
Outstanding idea.
Take out a Joe Judge insurance policy on all the houses outside of Fenway.
I don't think either one of them are doing anything else.
Something for playing in that game.
Mr. Chairman, I think they both have room in their schedules right now. They might be amenable to that.
It's possible. As long as we can get one of those vendors that's outside of Fenway that comes down with the, like, sweet sausage that they sell.
I can take care of that. The sausage guy.